These people didn't sit silent because they don't care. The law says they can't talk about it. What you talk about is not on the agenda. So I didn't mean to be wrong, but you were right. If my wife was still here, she'd be proud of me for doing that. So anyway, we have, after the board meeting tonight, one of the agenda items is to approve the AFR that Ms. Burns went over with us on Monday. Please, if you would please make sure you sign that. This question was asked, and I didn't know it was going to be asked, but COVID-19 protocol testing. This isn't the time for this, but Mr. Edlin and I worked all summer on ways, if we thought students were going to come back to school. We initially planned a hybrid system to start August 10th. The governor came out and made a statement about a week and a half after the board voted to use that protocol. And his executive order, it was strongly suggested that we be more cautious than the hybrid system. So we met, we had another board meeting, and we decided to go with the online for at least the first quarter, which ends next Friday, a week from tomorrow. Some of the things that are happening, that are happening here at school with COVID, and we've had a number of cases. As one person mentioned, I believe it was Ms. Salas, we've had four employees at least that come down, tested positive. One this week. We've got one right now waiting for the results. That would be five. We've had 12 or 13 students.
Thirteen, and we have some more waiting.
And we have some more waiting. And what scares me is we're a small district. And if we're seeing those kind of numbers, I worry about what happens, honestly. I want kids in school. My life is much more interesting when I have kids in school. I also worry about their health. Anyway, let me share these protocols with you. One of the things that frustrates Mr. Edlin and I, and probably the board, and probably you as parents, is the safety or the procedure depend on who's making them sometime. Last Thursday, I was on a Superdual Pima County Supes. We were on a Zoom meeting with the county health department. Even though the Arizona Health Department says we can open schools on a hybrid system, a gentleman named Brian Allison built, I don't even know his job over there. He said Pima County is not supportive of that. And he read some numbers to us. A Dr. Garcia from Pima County Health Department, the week before, had come out saying he didn't support it. So the state says one thing, and the county says something, and we're a small district, and we're trying to figure out who to follow. But these are the protocols. And this is what we're trying to follow so far since March with employees or students that we've dealt with. Because we do have a few students on campus right now. The governor's last executive order stated that we have to accept special ed kids, kids with an IEP. And so we don't have our full special ed population. If those parents who want to have their child, who has an IEP, they want to have their child in class, in person, we have them here. We also have students, it's a small number, children of essential workers who have no one to take care of their child, while both parents or single parent is at work. It's not exciting for them. They're in a computer lab, or they're in a workroom with an adult supervising them all day long. They go to the cafeteria to get food, and then they come back. But here are the protocols that we're trying to follow. And someone asked about this. If someone who lives or who just received a positive test result, you need to inform, this is staff. You need to let Ms. Edlin or I know. You need to stay home from work that day and schedule a test for yourself immediately. In other words, if we're telling a teacher that their spouse came down and their child came down, they, and their employee, they need to stay home and let us know why. And they need to get tested. While they're tested, their sick leave, teachers and classified people can accumulate sick leave over the years. That's not used. They get what we call COVID leave, up to 80 hours if they're a full-time employee. Once they expire the 80 hours, use all the 80 hours, then they have to use their own sick leave. But we expect the person not to come in and be quiet to see how their wife, or their kid, or someone else is doing, to let us know and get tested. I received one of those calls at 6:15 this morning from an employee. I appreciate it. You will work a normal schedule, performing duties from home until a result has been happened. So teachers, theoretically, this is a value of the online. They can teach wherever they have a computer and the Internet. So they could do that from home. If their tests come back negative, they can come back onsite and work onsite. But they have to bring a report to us before we can accept that. The staff may not return to work until a negative test result. So parents, we are not perfect. Probably a plethora of you would agree with that. But we're doing what seems to be reasonable. We're trying to follow what CDC is saying, and with the cooperation of staff, to keep people that we're aware that are testing positive in a safe situation. My worry, personally, and I'm not a medical person, is those people that are asymptomatic. They may not even know that they're sick, but that they still expose others. So that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Dunleavy. All right, let us move on to the consent agenda. I need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Aye.
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 Mr. Hill?
All right, we should move on to the personnel items. The first is approval of the Fall Intercession Employment Teaching Staff. Fall intercession will be completely online. Fall intercession will be October 19th to the 23rd, 2020. The administration is recommending the following staff for online teaching tutoring. Pardon? No? Oh, wait a minute, okay. Carolyn Rodriguez is K-1 grades. Alice Cordez is second and third grades. Ray Lee Melandres is fourth and fifth grade. Richard Rigadome is sixth grade. Babu KC will be the secondary seven through 12. And that, his first kids will be on supervising and unlocking and testing quizzes.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to add one name.
All right.
And that would be Marichu Beltran for special education. One of the things we have, we don't have ESY for special ed, for him or special ed kids. But if they're coming to school, if their parents think they need to be in school that week, we want to be, or learning that week, we want to provide that opportunity for them regardless.
The superintendent recommends that we, the hiring of the above six teachers to work during the intercession for the corresponding position for October 19th to the 23rd, 2020. So do I hear a motion to accept these teachers?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Aye, Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Hill?
The next is a classified employment of a custodial staff, Alexis Gomez Herrera. Alexis Gomez Herrera has been interviewed and reference checks completed for the position of the maintenance custodial worker. May I hear a motion that we accept Alex Gomez Herrera for a position of a maintenance custodial worker?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Hill?
Laura, did you hear that?
No.
She wanted you to say either I or A.
Oh, aye.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Yes.
Rodney's the only one that I'm having trouble hearing today.
Oh, okay.
If he can speak up, please.
Can I move it over here?
Sure.
Try that. I'll leave it on the desk here, okay?
Thank you.
All right, the next order of business is a paraprofessional, Bethany Mora, Mora, is that how you say it, Mora? Yeah, go close enough, thank you. Bethany Mora has been interviewed and reference checks completed for the position of paraprofessional teacher's aide. Superintendent recommended the employment of Bethany Mora for the position of paraprofessional teacher aide. So do I hear a motion to do that?
So moved.
I'll second.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Hill?
Aye.
Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
And the last part of personnel is extra pay position. The administration is seeking board approval for the extra duty stipends to the following staff members. Class advisor freshman is Jose Villasenor. Class advisor sophomore is Kay Metz and M. Lopez. Class advisor juniors is Jay Abaja and C. Aricon. Class advisor senior, Donnell Conley. National Honor Society, Kevin Commets. Junior High School Student Council Advisor, Emily Rosales. Special Education, Americhu Beltran. JOM and Title VI will be Leonard Edlin. Band director, Josie Green. Art director, Heidi Swallow. Art club advisor, again Heidi Swallow. Yearbook advisor, Donnell Conley. High School Student Council Advisor, Emily Rosales. CTE JTED Director, Leonard Edlin. L. Coordinator, M.A. Domalata. And Power School Tech Mentor is Babu KC. And the superintendent recommends approval of all of these individuals for extra duty pay position. May I hear a motion? Also move. Second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson? Aye.
And Mr. Hill?
Aye.
All right, moving on. The next will be the curriculum instruction and the approval of a student instruction model starting in 1026. The administration is asking the board to endorse a plan commencing on October 26, 2020. Model. This plan will be designated for promote the health and safety of all students and staff in the Unified School District. There are three options. One, continue the online program through the end of the fall semester. Two, implement a hybrid program whereby students will attend school two days per week and supplement instruction with an online program. And three is totally open the school for a traditional five-day attendance program for all students. And the superintendent recommends that we continue on the online instruction program. But we had quite a discussion last night. They may not always agree with you.
Can I share some data we received today? And now defer to Mr. Edlin, because he's been working on this pretty hard the last few days. We had a survey of the staff earlier in the week. And I mentioned this Monday night, our study session, but the audience in here, 73.3% of the staff voted for online. 26.7% voted for a hybrid program. No one voted for a full, a full, a full online program like we had before the COVID-19 hit. So those of you in the audience, when we talk about a hybrid program, we have students heterogeneously grouped by family. So no families are split up right now. The plan we had placed in effect in July was that Group A students would go to school Monday and Thursday, full day. Group B students would go Tuesday and Friday, full day. Wednesday would be tutoring and extra online help. They'd also have availability of online help the day they weren't here. Also, students whose families feel that even though the school's open in a full-blown model or a hybrid model, if I don't feel like they're safe, I'm going to keep them home and do online. As long as we know they're signing in online, we can tell the State Department they're registering and they're attendance. So, parents statistic, we did a survey today. Some of the board members suggested this Monday night. Results were a little bit different. 32.8% won full-time, five days a week. 20.3% wanted a hybrid program. 46.9% wanted an online program. So if, anyway, so that's some statistics that we didn't have. Not all the statistics when I spoke with the board about this Monday night. And you have some more comments?
Yeah, there were some things that we talked about in July when we talked about reopening the school and what we would need to do to meet those. And the first thing that we talked about was meeting the school benchmarks that were recommended by the governor and the Department of Health. There are three main benchmarks, which they were talked about a little bit earlier at the podium. And at one point in time, we hadn't met all three of those benchmarks. But for the last two or three weeks now, we have not met benchmark one. We're below that benchmark. So we have not met all three benchmarks to assume hybrid learning. And that's not been achieved. Ajo has seen, and is currently experiencing a regular and steady case occurrence in our town. We're currently sitting at 116 total cases since the outbreak began. And it's gone up steadily, almost on a daily basis. Today, there was not a case. However, there has been at least a case every, every day for the last several days. Medical professionals have been stating, or have stated, that while we don't yet know the long-term effects of this disease on a person, it's projected that this will have long-term and/or permanent effects on a person's respiratory system, heart, and lungs. And this is not something that I see as an acceptable risk to put our staff and students in. Some of the practical things about our building, oh, one other item. There have been nine people in their teens or less in the state of Arizona as of today who have passed away from COVID. So as far as our building, if a member of the staff tests positive, this is most likely going to cause multiple staff members the need to quarantine and then test, which is going to cause a significant staffing issue for the campus for no other reason than we don't have enough substitute teachers to staff classrooms. And we have one or two that have already said they would not be willing to substitute until we have a safer environment at this point in time. One of the hypotheticals would be if we have cafeteria exposure by either a student or a worker, this exposure could create us to cease meal service and availability for all of our students for a period of time, which would have a significant impact on our kids. Our building is what we would call less than modern. And we talked about the ventilation and HVAC system on Monday evening a little bit, being a closed system, which means that the air is recirculating in the room without bringing fresh air in. That is, I think, a concern that we need to look at. The last thing that I would say moving forward, no matter what we do, we're split at a 50-50 here. 50% of the people think we should consider, continue 100% online. 50% of the people think we should have kids coming back to school. No matter what the decision is that the board makes tonight, I ask that you would base it on facts and data that's available with the information that you've researched, not based on personal feeling. I'll support your decision, will support your decision. But I ask that you consider the personal health and safety of our staff, our students, and none of their families first and foremost when casting your vote decision.
Let's start with number one. I don't quite know how to do all three, but we start with number one. Continue the online program through the end of the fall semester. So I need a motion that would, to do that.
I can't hear.
Rodney made the motion to continue to the fall semester, and Wendy seconded it.
All online?
Yes, all till the end of the semester.
100% online until the end of the semester?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Hopkins?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Duncan?
No.
Ms. Moore?
No.
Mr. Hill?
So then we don't have to go any further.
May I say something, Madam President?
Yes.
For, I would come to the board if something happens. And this is not a light decision, folks. If something happens in the county or the state, like three weeks ago, there are something like 10 metrics the state has on measuring the virus. Part of them, pardon me?
With the mask on, please?
Yeah. I'm afraid no one can hear me without it.
We can't hear you with the mask on.
Let me, if you've been on the county health site or the Arizona Department of Health Services website, there are about 10 or 12 metrics. And they measure the metrics just like the stocklight, red, yellow, green. Green, the ones, the only ones that I'm aware of, I looked at earlier in the week, that are in green are bureaucratic-type things. Like if Mr. Edlin and I were the county health people, that we did certain type of record-keeping or set certain things up. It's not about people's health or the virus. About three weeks ago, depending on the news source you heard, which channel, but I heard nine counties, I heard 10 counties that had all of the metrics were in yellow, which was caution, but it's moderate risk. Within a week, Pima County was back in the red. And it was shortly after Labor Day weekend. 43% of the tests given, I don't know how many tests were given, in Pima County tested positive that week. In Maricopa County, 7%, well, I'm sorry, in the state, 7% tested positive. The goal is to be 5% or less for two weeks consistently. So if we, the board just voted to do this till the end of the semester. But this, kids, I want you to hear. That's more interesting, it's more important, it's better education. If in a month, we see a drastic change, we're at green, or we're yellow, and we've got two weeks of that, I would like to come back to the board and say, let's look at this again. Because I don't want this to be chiseled in granite until New Year's. I want to be able to look at, and to balance, kids' health, kids' education. And Mr. Edlin made a very good point. Most of the people that die are in my age range. But we have lost kids, and none of us want that. But if we see a change that can help us get students back in school in some fashion, I will bring that back for discussion.
Would you consider also that when you judge how many are ill and so forth, that you do it for Ajo and not the reservation? Because when we say 116, that most of them are on the reservation. They're not here.
And we're not in Tucson either.
They're not showing up.
That's just, that's just Ajo's zip code.
But that, that covers, the zip code covers why? It covers the reservation part, and it covers Ajo. And that makes a difference.
Reservation's currently showing about 285.
Yeah. That's the other part. But the part to the west is where they have a lot too. But no one has come up with actually numbers for Ajo.
There's, on the county site, there's data for the school district. And last I checked, that said 110 for our school district.
What was that again?
The county is showing 110 for our school district right now.
That doesn't make sense, Wendy, because that the page, you say 110 for the whole area.
That was a couple days ago.
The numbers we get are from the state zip code map. I did get what Wendy was referring to. I've had trouble getting it from load. But the county this past week has come out with one where they say they separated the numbers by school district.
But if you were saying all right along that it's been 100 cases for the area code, and now you say that its school district is 116, then it doesn't count why it doesn't count? I mean, there's something not right there in my book.
You have to speak to the county.
I will, I do.
You say me, I support their numbers.
It's all right, David. We just, it's more of a fun dip.
I really, I really appreciate all the comments tonight. And I wonder if, considering tonight's vote, there could be some sort of committee of stakeholders put together that included maybe some teachers, some families, maybe even other community members who care about the school and the kids at the school. Is that a possibility at all? Because we have this window now to kind of prepare for hopefully opening. Is that something that could be considered?
Definitely. We did that, in fact, in the summer. We had a meeting one afternoon. We had Mr. Leonard from the clinic. We had parents, we had, pardon? We had the ambulance company represented. So we had, we had probably 15 people, 20 people.
It was 10 or 12, I think.
We had a good discussion, because this was something new. It was a big change for our community. And schools are always important. But in a community the size of beautiful downtown Ajo, the school's the center, because everybody, everybody in the town deals with the school, and it's a passion almost, especially if you have children. And so we wanted to let people know what we were thinking. So I'm like, yes, definitely, I'm a big believer in that.
All right, let's move on to, the next order of business is the approval of Proposition 301 payout to 1920 certified teachers. Mr. Edlin has complied himself for the year 1920. Proposition 301 plan for each teacher employed that year. Payment has been calculated in accordance with the approval governing board Proposition 301 plan. And the detail is detached, and I'm not going to read it, because it goes on and on and on. May I have a motion that would approve the attached Proposition 301 payout for the 2019 and 2020 academic year?
I have, I have a question first. I pointed out last, on Monday, that a lot of these numbers are pretty low. Many of them. I was surprised to see that, especially seeing the names, and some of these are really, really good teachers. I'm wondering if the teachers are aware of the numbers that they have? If they know the criteria? And why, why they ended up with the numbers that they have?
They definitely know what the criteria was, because that's listed in the 301 plan that they approved last year. I'm not sure, this was before, all of this data was compiled before I came. This is simply, the only thing I've done is create the formula that calculates all the, all the data through there.
I can address that for a second, if you would just. Yes, Leonard, Mr. Edlin's correct. He, he's coming late on the scene. The teachers, yes, were aware of it, because they had the vote to approve this plan last year. And we had more numbers, a higher percentage of them needed to approve. But some of the numbers, if you and I, if I think you're talking about what I'm thinking of, it's, some people did not feel that they need to do certain things. And it was almost, in my opinion, it was the easiest way to be successful. They chose not to do it. And it's not several teachers. But one of the things, for example, was a certain percent of students that you deal with, or a certain period if you're a secondary teacher, that you have 90% of those students represented in parent conferences, because that's important. Parents need to know what their kids are doing or what they're not doing. Some people thought that was, the term was, I'm jumping through hoops, and I want to do it. And so they choose not to do it, they don't want to. It doesn't impact, it's not a statement about their teaching ability, but I think it's, I disagree with them strongly. I think it's important to have relationships with parents and the community to make the child, the student successful. But they just didn't, they didn't see the value in it, even though they, it was part of the plan. So they knew the plan, they chose not to participate in that part.
One of the other things that I did notice, looking at some of the lower numbers, some of them didn't get their certification until almost halfway through the school. some of them didn't get their certification until almost halfway through the school year.
Yeah, no, I am excluding those because there are, there are several that, that's not the case.
It goes to teacher choice.
May I hear a motion that we approve?
I, I have.
Oh, you have another one?
Yeah, so I guess my concern is, it sounds like they don't, they haven't necessarily seen their numbers and they don't necessarily know why they received those numbers. My concern is that someone may, we may approve this and then a teacher may come and say, oh wow, this is way lower than I thought it was. Is there?
I believe there's an appeal process built into policy or the, I can't remember off the top of my head, but I do remember seeing that there is an appeal process as to why they, if they didn't get as much as they think they should have gotten, they can appeal that.
So if we approve these numbers,
they can, they can.
They can appeal that and it can be changed because it's already been changed once since Monday.
Yes.
Right, we found two certification issues and a whole ton of teachers.
And one of the things, it's not a factor here, but it could be a factor. And this, the amounts this year are less than last year. And part of that is because this is based on a formula the state department, not state department, the legislature gives us and it's based on sales tax revenue. This was, this 301 came about in about 2,000, it has a 10, six tenths of a percent sales tax. So when the economy is not doing as well, there's not as much sales tax revenue. We saw that during the recession and we're going to see that worse next year, we can see it this year, so that adds to.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm waiting on a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Hopkins, Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Well, the motion is on approving the Prop 301 payout for the 2019, 2020 certified teachers. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Hill? Passes five minutes.
And the next order of business is approval of the 2020 to 2021 Proposition 301 plan. The school principal and a team of teachers in consultation with the business manager and the superintendent developed a 301 plan for 2020, 2021 school year. Teachers have reviewed the plan, gave feedback and voted 87% to approve the plan. The vote was 26 yes, 3 no and 1 no vote. Superintendent recommends that we approve the attached Proposition 301 plan. So I need a motion.
I, I have a question. So I, I think I understand what you're saying, this, this is similar to, to the plan that was.
We did make it a little easier for a couple.
That's what I'm going to ask.
We made it a little easier for them to qualify for a couple of things, to verify conferences, parent positive, parent contacts. We did simplify that process a little bit so that they could be rewarded for the significant efforts that they're making to try and schedule those conferences, even if they can't make contact with people, they can document a way to do that. And also to be able to show positive contacts. If they can show that they reached out three times in a positive manner via email, even if the parent doesn't respond to them, they can show three positive emails to the family and that was count as a contact, even if the family didn't respond.
Okay, thank you. And my other question on this is, one of the components is related to our school grade. It's 25% of the bucket number two. So what, could you, what are our school grades now?
Our school grade right now is a B for the high school and a C for the elementary. And I don't remember the percentages, but the, the goal is to maintain or improve those grades. And we feel that all teachers, regardless of whether a classroom academic teacher or a special ed teacher, art music PE, those people all contribute to students' academic growth, so we're holding all accountable.
So I'm reading this as, the only way they can get 100% of that criteria is if our school achieves an A, both schools.
Right, same criteria that it was the year before, exactly the same criteria as it was the year before. If the school were to get an A, they would get 100% of that, 25% of the bucket. If we got a B, it would be 85%, C is 75%.
And we've done that in the past. When the state test was Ames instead of AZ Merit, we were at an A in both schools for five years probably.
Okay, so do you consider that, it's supposed to be an achievable goal. Do you consider it achievable that this year, in this year of COVID and online schooling and everything, that the elementary school could go from a C to an A and they could get all their 100%?
Yeah, other schools are doing it.
I was going to say, other schools are doing it. And I, and I believe grades are going to be scaled this year because of what's, everyone's going through the same thing. So when the school, the score should be scaled.
And so that leads me to my last question and that is, it does sound like school grades, the COVID situation might affect school grades testing and this particular criteria is tied to school grades and testing. So if that's the case, will that come back to the board if, if those?
Right, we could always modify a 30, we could always modify a category if we see that the category is not realistic because of, like last year, realistically, there was no AZ M2 testing at the end of the year last year. So that's something that we can come back and look at and say, hey, that's not reasonable.
Okay, I question the reasonable achievability of pulling a C school to an A school at this time. Also, we're, you know, quarter of the way into the, into the year, right? I'd like to see the teachers get all of it, not, not, not just give it to them, but be able to get all of it.
May I make a comment?
Sure.
And I don't have the data in front of me, but the scale is significant for a C from point X to point Y. Last year, we were extremely close, I'm taking that back, not last year. 1819 was the last year that we went through the day. We were like two or three points from being a B in the elementary. And equally, the high school was maybe not that small, but they were closer to the bottom of the B than we'd like to see them. So it's not something I agree that happens in one year, if they're, if they're a C minus going to a B plus or an A is going to be tough. But, you know, also in the size of our district, sometimes four or five students that test well could make a significant difference. Or test poorly.
And I also think as soon as we get them back to school, they have a better chance of doing that.
Yeah, if you're holding the students accountable, you have to hold the teachers accountable online as well.
So we'll hold that it can happen.
The teachers have voted.
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven percent.
And the law requires 70%, we had 87%.
I'm waiting a motion on that. Second?
Mr. Hopkins, aye, Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Hill? Passes five minutes.
The next is approval of the fiscal year 2019 annual financial report. Annually, all public school districts in Arizona must file an annual financial report with the Arizona Department of Education and the Arizona Auditor General's office. This report will be reviewed with the board at the study session on Monday, October 5th, 2020, which it was. So superintendent recommends the approval of the attached 2019 annual financial report for the Aho Unified School District. Do I hear a motion? I will. Okay, I'll second it.
Mr. Hill? Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins, aye, Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
The next is approval of the governing board policy, second reading. The Arizona School Board Association has proposed changes to the attached board policies. GCCA professional support staff sick leave and GCKA professional support staff tell community. Thank you.
Tell community.
Superintendent recommends and accepts of the attached policies upon the second reading. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Mr. Hopkins, aye, Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
And Mr. Hill?
And the last, or not quite last, is the business approval of the governing board policy, second reading. The Arizona School Board Association has proposed changes to the attached board policy, ACA sexual harassment and ACAA Title IX sexual harassment. Superintendent recommends acceptance of the attached policies upon the second reading. And I hear a motion?
So moved. I'll second it.
Ms. Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Hill?
Aye.
Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins, aye, Ms. Moore?
Aye.
The next order of business is, Ms. Robinson was selected by the board at a September board meeting to serve as the Aho Unified Delegate Assembly Representative, county meeting representative. And registration for the delegate assembly was from September 17th to October 1st. Confirmation for Ms. Robinson's resignation is attached.
Madam President?
Yes.
At the board meeting, Monday evening, Ms. Robinson, we talked, we talked. There was concern, and I'd like to, I'd like if her, she could make a comment about this. She was concerned, I believe. Thank you. Ms. Robertson was concerned she had received materials from ASBA, am I correct?
Right, and then I.
So is this a moot point?
Yeah, well, I, I think so, we have the materials now. Did everyone get the, the, the technical agenda? Yeah, so, so I think we're good, this is just what we'll be voting on at the delegate assembly. It's basically what the ASBA uses as guidance in essentially lobbying our government to support the schools. And if anyone has any comments that they'd like to give me, I can, I'm your messenger, so I can share that at the delegate assembly. If it seems like we need to vote on something, then we probably would have to have another brief meeting this week because on the 12th, I have to submit any changes to the political agenda.
And the meeting on that, that, okay.
The 17th is the meeting, but we have to, they're doing it because it's online. They're asking for the changes earlier than they normally would, it's not all done in person.
And I sent this to you guys all this morning. But if you want an actual hard copy, I can get you a hard copy.
Probably the biggest change, last year I attended this delegate assembly, it was actually quite educational. My understanding is that a lot of these ideas are annual. They, it doesn't change a whole lot from year to year. This year, we have another big section on COVID, that's our response to COVID. So that's, that's really a major, major change. So, yeah, so if you have, if you don't have anything now, but you have, you think of something, you can contact probably Marcia or Bob and they can get the message to me or decide if we need to meet about it. Okay?
And the last order of business is, a teacher has received three letters of reprimand and is requesting a hearing. Per the district attorney's recommendation, the superintendent shall be assigned as the individual who conducts the personnel hearing appeal. And so what we need to vote on is to appoint Dr. Robert F. Dooley as the hearing officer for the teacher's hearing appeal. Do I hear a motion on that?
I, I have a comment. As I read this complaint, the employee is.
You're going to be tired tonight.
Things work out so well with some slug man.
Thank you, Angela. As I read this complaint, the employee, employee is stating that the procedure for discipline, which is a legal requirement, was not followed. If that's true, then any discipline that she received should be reversed. Therefore, I'm requesting the administration either reverse the discipline or provide documentation that proper procedure was followed and report back. Now, if the administration can demonstrate, regarding this agenda item, if the administration can demonstrate to the board that the procedure for discipline was followed, then we can move forward with this appeal. But under no circumstances should Dr. Dooley be appointed as the hearing officer as he was party to the hearing that is being appealed. That is the chain of command, it goes from principal to superintendent to board.
Did I understand correctly that you received something from the employee in question?
Yes, by email, did you not receive it, Laura?
No, I didn't.
Okay, so in that case, I would say we, we should table this because we have a board member who has not even received this document.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
I shared this, the document with our attorney. He strongly recommends the policy or the action that is on the board agenda. He said in no way should the board be involved. And in reference to one of the questions Ms. Robertson just asked about, if there were procedures that were inaccurate, that's the purpose of, that's one of the purposes of the appeal and the hearing.
Hello?
I'm sorry, Ms. Preu. I'm sorry, Ms. Preu, what I said was I shared the employee's appeal letter that was sent to the board members. And he strongly recommended that we follow policy GCQF, which states that the person that authored the discipline, that person's supervisor, which Mr. Edlund wrote to discipline, pardon, and I am his immediate supervisor, that I be, that's the next echelon of hearing and that we follow the policy and the board not be involved in that. And Mrs. Robertson asked a question that she read from the teacher's appeal letter that went to the board. And my comment was, that's the whole purpose of the appeal hearing that the lawyer is recommending that I chair. And we, and we, one of the things we have to do per policy, we have to hold the hearing within 10 days of the time that the employee received the discipline.
How many days have it been?
It's been about, I have to count, it's 10 working days. It's been about five working days so far.
Okay. Can I, can I, do you know right now?
Yes, I can, I will send it right now.
Thank you.
So the table that doesn't work, it needs to happen within 10 days unless we're going to have a separate session scheduled between now and then.
So we need a motion.
We would, it has to be an executive session anyway, I would think, since we probably would have a separate session.
This is not an executive session issue, this is a hearing issue.
Right, but the hearing, most likely the, the appeal hearing would be in a committee session.
It's not, it wouldn't be, it's just semantics, it's not an executive session because if I'm the hearing officer, I'm not an elected official. And if, yeah, anyway, so that is, it would be a private meeting with representatives from the two parties, the appellant and the school principal. They need to have someone come in, persons that come in and let their tests fail, obviously can't say anything. But it would be, it would probably be in private, but it wouldn't be open to the public, didn't answer your question, it wouldn't be an executive session.
Okay, so are you, so it's, it sounds like, are you saying this is going, the board is not going to be involved in this?
Correct, that's the, that's your attorney's recommendation.
Okay, so, but she is appealing to the board.
That was a mistake. Attorney said that the superintendent should be the hearing officer.
But you've already been involved in her discipline.
I was a witness with all.
Okay, even as a witness, an employee has the right to appeal.
I'm telling you what your attorney said.
But this is true, an employee has a right to appeal discipline that they are so subject to and to work up the chain of command. If you were observing this discipline, you were party to. And to work up the chain of, of command. If you were observing this discipline, you are party to it. And so it makes sense that she would go to the board next with her appeal. Why would she appeal to the person that's there? Witnessing her discipline and, and assuming, assuming approving of the discipline.
We're probably not going to agree on this, Ms. Robertson, but the policy says it'd be the next echelon, which is me.
But she's already been involved.
Let me finish please. And the superintendent knows the story, knows the whole story, read, read the appeal. And says that needs to be you. In no way should the board be involved.
Do you mean the lawyer?
Pardon me?
Do you mean the lawyer is saying that?
The lawyer said that, yes, your attorney. And there's no point in having a train unless we pay attention to what they're saying.
But if the lawyer is advising an, an appeal process where the person doesn't really get to appeal because they're.
That's not accurate.
It does, it's not moving it forward in the chain of command.
Ma'am, that's not accurate.
How was it?
There will be that because you're judging an appeal process that hasn't happened. You're assuming that nothing that the teacher appeals is going to be respected or honored. It hasn't happened yet. So you can't say that. Or you shouldn't say that. I should say.
There was a meeting in which an employee was reprimanded and you both were party to that.
I understand.
The employee is not satisfied with the outcome of that, so they have the right to appeal that outcome. And they've appealed it to the board. It makes no sense to revisit the, the meeting and call it appeal.
You've heard, you've heard what your attorney is recommending. I don't want us to say.
I, the, I wish that we could talk to the attorney and the attorney could tell us why, why that's the case.
Are you assuming, please tell me you're not assuming I'm giving you misinformation from the attorney?
I, I don't know. All I know is that does not make sense to me. So it would be nice to be able to talk to the attorney and have them explain why a person who is appealing, is appealing to the same person.
No, we certainly can't wait for table as my body said because of our ten day policy.
I think we need to move on. We're never going to get anywhere between the two of you. So. Can we have a motion then that, um, we will appoint Dr. Robert Dooley, uh, as the hearing officer for the teacher's hearing? Appeal.
Collins, you still ready to take the day?
No.
I'll make the motion.
And I'll second it.
Mr. Hill?
Aye.
Ms. Duncan?
Aye.
You said, uh, Ms. Moore?
No.
Ms. Robertson?
No.
And Mr. Hopkins? Did not pass at two, three.
Then she's not going to have a hearing within the next ten days. So what happens?
It's gonna, we're going to have to talk to our attorney again. We're getting regular bills from our attorney folks.
Yes.
Regular bills.
If he would come and talk to us, it would be much more efficient.
You're already on.
He doesn't have to travel. He can call.
Ms. Ms. Robertson, you and I are totally at a disagreement on this issue. This is not a good topic.
Alright, moving on. I, um, building that no other business, the president of the board. We will adjourn this reading and it is six fifty-nine.